My name is Pat Costellano and I am a member of the League of Women Voters as well as a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating this forum. On behalf of the League, I'd like to welcome everyone. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this general issues pre-primary forum for the St. Louis County Commissioner District 3. Thank you candidates for your willingness to participate in county government and in this forum. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. As League members, we acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. And you're invited to join us. For more information, check out our website at www.lwvduluth.org. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a League do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at this forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters Duluth. Additionally, our sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. And please remember to exercise your right to vote in the primary on Tuesday, August 11th. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the St. Louis County Commissioner District 3 candidates, Ashley Grimm and Joe McCord. And thank you for participating. Candidate Urquola was unable to attend and per the League of Women Voters Minnesota policy has submitted an empty chair statement for us to read. Our forum will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by the questioning round. Questions have been vetted by our organizing committee. Candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their response to our questions. The questioning round has been set up so that you'll be asked in a rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond was determined at random and will rotate the responses through the forum. After the questioning round is completed, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement prior to the end of the forum. So I'll begin with candidate Urquola's prepared statement. Eric Urquola, in response to the request to attend your forum, please accept this as my empty chair response under provision of the LWV empty chair policy. As a candidate for the 3rd District St. Louis County Commissioner seat, the following are the main points of my campaign. Economic development. St. Louis County has seen little or no growth over 20 years. Our county has some of the best natural, human, and infrastructure resources of anywhere in the country. It is, I would like to put these resources to work for the benefit of everyone in the county. The budget for economic development has remained virtually unchanged for the last five years. Economic development is key to driving the county forward. A thriving economy will increase tax revenues, holding the line on property taxes, lowering deficits, and funding our priorities for infrastructure, public safety, and social service programs. Infrastructure. Keep up the investments on county roads, utilities, and maintain through the use of the dedicated sales tax for road funding that we currently have. If elected, I will oppose any talk of using this fund for any other purpose. Once again, economic development is part and parcel to keeping the infrastructure moving forward. Public safety. St. Louis County is the largest land area county east of the Mississippi River. The Sheriff's Department does a good job of covering the county with current staffing levels, but with changing conditions, it is my opinion that funding for the Sheriff's Department needs to be increased to better provide for the safety of our residents. Strengthening the Duluth-Iron Range connection. There are people who are willing to exploit any hint of a rift between the Iron Range and Duluth to further an agenda to the detriment of both. This relationship needs to be strengthened for the benefit of the entire county. When we all move in the same direction, we will all prosper as a result. It's time to grow and strengthen, not exploit and divide. Additionally, I have garnered the following endorsements. Duluth News Tribune, Teamsters Drive Council 32, Duluth Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm the only candidate in this race that draws their entire income from the private sector. This coupled with 30 years of experience in business and industry provided me with a unique skill set to move the 3rd District and St. Louis County ahead. So, empty chair statement from candidate Urquola. And now we'll ask the candidates to provide their prepared opening statement. We'll begin with candidate McCord.
Okay, thank you so much. First off, I want to thank you for inviting me to this forum today. The League of Women Voters is a great resource for voters and it gives a great platform for us candidates to come and share our ideas and have a great conversation. So, thank you to Ashley as well for joining us today. So, I'm a lifelong resident of Duluth. This is where I've spent my entire life. This is where I chose to stay with my wife and we have three boys. This is also where we decided to stay and start our own business. We do adult foster care. We care for disabled, or developmentally disabled adults. And so I see firsthand the role that counties play in the lives of our most vulnerable citizens. And I also have a unique perspective on what it's like to own and operate a business in our community. So my goal as a county commissioner will be to help facilitate our recovery during this time. You know, while we maintain these important services, you know, to our most valuable, our vulnerable citizens, as well as the important services, all the other important services that our county provides. Commissioner's going to have the difficult task in coming months, in years of budgeting and prioritizing our services to keep uninterrupted delivery of these key services. You know, we're very rich in environmental resources and we're leaders in healthcare and education and aviation. And I think it's important that these are great resources to lean on and that we should build on throughout this recovery. So again, thank you for the opportunity today and I appreciate it.
Thank you candidate McCord. Candidate Grimm?
Yeah, thank you for having us both here today. So I'm Ashley Grimm. I live in the Denfeld neighborhood with my husband Luke. I grew up in Barnum helping take care of younger family members, which is in large part why for the last 13 years I've worked with families and students. And I would say keeping families safe, healthy, and whole has been a large part of the work that I've done. It's personally important to me and it's also really important in this race because that is a key role of the county government. And we are going to have to do that on a tight budget. And that's what I do every day for the largest emergency meal provider in northeast Minnesota. Another big part of my job that I love to do is I help build employment opportunities. So I worked for Lake Superior College helping connect students to the trades. At Damiano Center, when I started, I built an employment program for teens to tackle community issues and to mentor younger youth and to really build representational leadership in Duluth. And we're going to have to really engage our workforce and build collaborations between government, local businesses, and local nonprofits. And that's really been key to the projects that I've worked on and I'm excited about bringing that to the county too. And then lastly, I just got done with my term on the Human Rights Commission. I served for seven years as, and I was Chair and Vice Chair. And I think one of the most important things that I did on there is I really pushed for accountability in what we did. So I made sure that we never had a community forum for input where decisions were already made beforehand. It's really important to me to build community voice and that's not a skill that is easy to do just right off the bat. It's hard earned. And so I really want someone in this seat who both knows the scope and the day-to-day work of the county as well as what it will take to politically organize during these times.
Great, thank you so much candidate Grimm. And now we'll move on to the questions that were submitted by the organizing committee. Each of you will have one and a half minutes to respond. And we'll begin, we'll go back to candidate McCord. What are the top three goals that you hope to achieve if elected to this position?
Well, I think the top three goals certainly for our district and the county and what a lot of counties are facing is economic recovery. So right now, our businesses and families throughout our county are financially devastated from COVID-19. And so how can we facilitate our recovery? And I think some of the best ways we can do that is first making sure that we tap into some of these budget reserves to fill the gaps. Because the county has a lot of roles, the county has a lot of programs, and we don't want to have interruption in many of those services. They're very important. Also then would be the revitalization. So where can we invest in our county to help carry us through these difficult times? And then hopefully on the backside of this to come out stronger, which I think is what every county board hopes to achieve. And so ways of doing this are continued investment into our infrastructure programs. We have a sales tax of a half percent and that's dedicated for our infrastructure. And I think it's important that we continue to dedicate those funds to those, continue to invest in our programs. And then fast-tracking development projects through economic development is, I think, the fastest way to jumpstart our local small business and revitalize our region's economy.
Thank you. Candidate Grimm, same question?
Yeah, I agree that one of the top prioritized things I want to prioritize is stabilizing the economy. The county has some direct tools at its disposal to do that. So for instance, tax abatement, there's a blight reduction program, but largely the state and the city have a lot more economic tools. So it's going to be about building partnerships with the state and city and really coming at it as a unified team. As well as having a sound budget. So I really would argue that nonprofits really know how to run services on a budget that gets needs met for families and how to make a dollar stretch. I do it every day and if I waste $5, that's two meals I don't get out to families. So I take that really seriously. Second is running county services in a way that we don't lose the progress that we've made. We've had a really strong representative with Beth Olson and we have been able to reduce out-of-home placements, which are important, but they're one of the most expensive things that the county spends on. And if we can use preventative services to keep families together and whole, that's good economically and it's the right thing to do. So I want to make sure that we don't lose the progress and we see people in there who have worked in preventative services. And last, because I have 15 seconds left, a strong public health response. We all know what we're navigating with COVID and the county is going to play a critical role in that response.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Next question and we'll go back to candidate McCord. St. Louis County covers a large geographic area and includes communities with a variety of needs. How will you balance the needs of the 3rd District with the needs of the entire county?
Well, certainly, I'm a big proponent of one county. What's important for St. Louis County is really how we all work well together and the strength of our Northland is mining, shipping, and industry. And each of our communities have very specific needs and very specific strengths that help the county as a whole. And so I think collaboration with all of the county commissioners to seek out the best opportunities for each District is important.
Candidate Grimm?
Yeah, as someone who is from rural Minnesota, I think it's really important that we're serving every single part of the county. And I believe that it's a balancing act too because West Duluth, there's areas of it that definitely have been overlooked. So I want to make sure that we have a strong save for what happens here, for reducing some of the blight in West Duluth, for talking about challenges that Denfeld students are facing after they're graduating and thinking about what kind of opportunities they have. But then building strong relationships with the rest of the county board and getting out there in every part of the county to talk directly to people. Because that's something that was important to me on the Human Rights Commission and the other organizing work that I've done, is you have to go out there and talk to the people first. And I have experienced doing that and it's something I do really believe in.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go back to you with this next question.
Okay.
So you start. The 3rd District has seen the closing of Kmart and most recently the Verso Paper Mill. What will you do to encourage or promote the return of these or similar businesses to Western Duluth?
Right, so I live really close to Kmart actually and I think that residents in this area should be able to shop locally instead of having to go to Herman Town or other areas. I think there's a wide variety, but it's going to be done in partnership. So it might end up being a public-private partnership in order to incentivize, it might be working with the city because there's opportunity zones and Kmart is either in one of those or close to those. They're cut strange because of census tracts. And so there's incentives to have tax abatements and things like that that we can really offer to companies to get good jobs in the area. But one of the things that I would want to make sure if we are giving as a county these tax abatements and incentives, I want to make sure that they're good-paying jobs. I want to make sure that families can afford to live on one job. And I want to make sure that it's serving the community and that we're doing our part to make sure that they're employing from the community too, so that it has a net whole gain for everybody involved and not just the owners of the companies.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, candidate McCord, same question?
Yes, so certainly the loss of Kmart was very impactful for the residents of Western Duluth, especially those that don't have vehicles. And Verso Paper, I've coached football for 20 years right across from Verso Paper, so we've had a lot of coaches that go through there. And so it's not only impactful to those families, but also our logging industry. There's a lot of, there's a lot of negative things that happen when we see closing industry in our communities. And so investing in through economic development, abatements are one tool that we can use. Also, we've got the half percent sales tax to help create new roads and invest in through infrastructure and road building for these communities. And how do we attract, and I think our economic development has been stale for many years in our county. And so I think we need renewed investment through that department. Costco's great and it's great to have a company like Costco be invested into our community. But like Ashley said, there's a lot of opportunity zones. There's Kmart, there's the Atlas Cement and U.S. Steel properties. You know, a lot of these properties have been sitting vacant for years. And so renewed investment into our economic development, I think, is really paramount to our recovery.
Okay, thank you. And candidate Grimm, we'll go back to you with the next question to start. The St. Louis County Board of Commissioners recently voted not to take a position on a resolution to welcome refugees to settle in the county. This vote was in response to the President's request for a response from every county that wished to settle refugees in their county. What's your position on the proposed resolution and what are your thoughts on the concerns that citizens on each side of the issue expressed?
So I think there was a lot of public misinformation out there and I think the county board has a responsibility to educate people on that. I actually worked in refugee services in the Twin Cities for a year and after that with refugee families. And I know they are incredibly hardworking and the people that I worked with were really contributors to society. So I think first, we needed to dispel those myths. And in terms of symbolic votes, I by and large am not an advocate of symbolic votes, but this vote was charged to the county. And it is, and sometimes it's our obligation to follow, but in terms of this issue, that was an opportunity to lead. And I really looked to our Duluth commissioners who did take a stand on that and said that we will be a welcoming environment and who are doing the hard work of helping educate people and have open conversations about this.
Okay, thank you candidate McCord, same question?
Yes, so the refugee issue as we know is a very divisive issue. I think all of us in Minnesota especially are very compassionate people and we all want to see opportunities for folks that are in desperate need of that assistance. You know, but with this refugee issue, I think there was a lot on the table that wasn't known yet. And what does the future look like for programs like such when they're brought in and what is the long-term goals? And I think for this issue, the symbolic vote portion of it, right now, we're really facing a serious crisis in our communities with the folks that we have here right now. And I understand that the courts are working through the process with the refugee issue. And so I think symbolic votes do tend to be divisive in nature. And at a time when really we want our communities to come together, I think holding off on certain votes until we have all the information or until it's the right time to take that vote is probably our best opportunity.
Right, thank you. And then we'll begin with you on the next question, candidate McCord. What has our current health crisis taught us about the needs of our communities of color?
Well, certainly I think our current health crisis right now is, you know, it's impacting a lot of people. But specifically, yes, there's a disproportionate amount of people of color that are being affected from this pandemic. And I think a lot of that stems from maybe lack of resources, lack of being able to get information out. The county plays an important role in getting important health information out to the public. Their website does a great job of getting that information out, but not everybody has access to those issues. So I think the county's role is really in outreach. Certainly during times like this, there are departments in our county, our St. Louis County Public Health Department really needs to strive, and they've done a great job, I'm not saying that they haven't, but you know, these minority populations certainly are disproportionately affected. So how do we continue our outreach and get information out to them, I think is important.
Thank you. And candidate Grimm, same question?
Yeah, I, so I just wanted to do a little bit of cleanup. So just as information, there's only been one refugee resettlement in the last five years and I think that's important for people to know and for the board to tell people. Second, this health crisis has really showed some glaring inequities in our system. And there, a lot of the families that I work with, they are having a hard time making ends meet. And you're a lot more likely to have a job that isn't union, that doesn't have good healthcare benefits, where you're not able to take as much time off if your child gets sick and if you need to take care of a family member, if you are a person of color in Duluth. And I think we need to start not just talking about it, but building solutions. And so one problem that's been exposed is that when healthcare is tied to your employment and then people lose their employment, there's a lot of people suffering right now. And so I think the role of the county in terms of making sure that we have a strong public health department doing outreach to uninsured populations is key. I think that we as a county need to do a better job of diversifying the trades and making sure that we're actually giving people opportunities and for good-paying jobs, so we work on economic equality too in our community because this is a huge issue.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to candidate McCord on the next question. I will begin with you. St. Louis County has many citizens who are dealing with mental health and chemical dependency issues. What is the county's role in providing some solutions?
Well, the county, the Public Health and Human Services is really one of the big three programs that the county, the departments that the county oversees. And so it's outreach into mental illness and opioid epidemic and caring for our most vulnerable citizens is really at the core of what it does. And so, did you say what's the county's role?
Yes, what's the county's role in, what's the county's role in providing some solutions?
In solutions. So I think working with departments again and having outreach programs, but certainly we need to make sure that Public Health and Human Services is well-funded. As one of the biggest contributors in combating homelessness in our opioid epidemics, we need to make sure that we're investing in our Public Health and Human Services Department, giving them the tools that they need to get into the community, to work with care providers, with community leaders. They have a program, the ACT, where they go out assertive care treatment, I might have messed that up, but their ACT program where they actually have outreach and they go out into the community and they help folks with their medications before they reach the point where they need further assistance or they end up homeless and on the streets. So I think in investing in those not only helps our vulnerable populations, but it really provides a lot of cost savings down the road.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Grimm, same question?
Yeah.
Do you have to repeat it or are you okay?
No, that's okay. I really agree with that in terms of investing in our Public Health and Human Services Department and the work that social workers do and public health nurses and programs that Joe talked about. And then a second piece of that, that the county plays a critical role in is housing. Housing is proven to help people stay sober, get free from addiction, build stability, and even help reunite families. So that's why I have been part of the Board for Housing for Inmates, which is reviving itself and is going to be working with women who are getting out of prison, who have dealt with addiction issues in the past. And there's a cognitive behavioral program that's fantastic. It's run through the Damiano Center and it's called Health Realizations. And it's proven to work. And so if we can partner programs like that with housing options and real supports, we can unify families and get people back on their feet and ready for success. I think a lot of us have dealt with in our personal lives, loved ones who we know who suffer from addiction and mental health issues. And I know that there's times when you really struggle as a family member to want to have somebody get help and they're not ready. I think the role that the county plays is when people are ready for that step, we absolutely need to make sure that there's the housing and resources and support in place to make that happen for a better community and for safe families.
Thank you. And we'll go with you first on the next question?
Okay, sounds good.
All right. As a county that has a large industrial energy consumption, would you support reducing the fossil fuel footprint and lobby the legislature to stay on task with respect to green energy? Why or why not? Would you like me to repeat or are you okay?
Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, I think we absolutely should be voices for clean energy. And in part because the writing's on the wall. You see that with large industries who are now transitioning to clean energy. The role that the county plays in that process, since we don't have any oversight over extractive industry or the permitting process and things like that, but we do have the opportunity to really showcase green building and green projects that the county can do. So for instance, in Cook County, we were able to construct a building, we got people to work constructing that building, that uses net zero fossil fuels. It's geothermal and solar and that's going to save us money in the long run. And now we can point to projects like that and say, this can be done in places. We can be leaders in a green economy that can look a lot of different ways at many other levels of government. But I think that's one role the county can really play. And then of course, working with our state legislatures and our city to make sure that we're working together to build an economy of the future.
Thank you. Candidate McCord, same question?
Yes, so I think when you talk about energy, it's very important to have a balanced approach. You know, we know that the wave of the future will be reducing our footprint and lessening our dependence on fossil fuels, but how we get there, I think, is important. Right now, in our trades, there's a lot of family sustaining jobs that work to continue up our infrastructure and to keep our very reliable power source flowing. And so, but there again, there are trades in renewable sources as well. And so what's the county role in this transition? And I think it's, you know, supporting our traditional energy sources right now, but looking for opportunities in renewable sources. St. Louis County partnered with the Minnesota Power and the University of Minnesota Duluth NRI program where they used renewable energy sources as a pilot program to see how well that would work. And I think continuing to explore and invest in opportunities like that, to find better sources of energy for the future is important.
Thank you. And we'll go to candidate Grimm again first on the next question. What more can county government do to address aging infrastructure, for example, roads and bridges in the region?
Yeah, so the county oversees over 600 bridges, there's thousands of miles of road. And something that we don't talk about quite as often is that a lot of those roads are dirt roads. dirt roads. And so, I think we can definitely keep the half percent sales tax. We've been able to redo, I think, about 40% of county roads. A lot of them are labeled as a D in terms of where they stood at infrastructure. And part of the reason is because we need a solid infrastructure to make sure that we have a solid economy and that we're attracting businesses. But also, that's a key role the county plays in keeping people at work, in good-paying union jobs. So I think we have to make sure that we partner with the state to keep local government aid funding, and also that half percent sales tax, making sure that it's used on roads and bridges, and that we're really seeing that as an investment for the future.
Thank you. Candidate McCord, same question?
Yeah, absolutely. Continued investment into our infrastructure is really important at any time. I think it's especially important in moments like this, twofold. One, we know that there's going to be budgetary issues in the future, and if we neglect our infrastructure, those problems will only compound on each other. The second part of that is continued investment into our infrastructure, especially in times like these, like Ashley said, keeps people back in work with well-paying construction jobs, well-paying jobs that are family-sustaining. And so, ways that we can do that is, like she said, again, half percent sales tax. That's dedicated strictly for our infrastructure, making sure that that money stays dedicated to those. Also, with infrastructure, too, a lot of things, we have the ports, you know, and it's very important. The ports are a very important part of our economy up here. And keeping good roads and keeping good infrastructure to and from the ports ensures that we can continue to see economic development.
What should government do about the growing economic disparity between the poor, middle-class, and wealthy?
Well, I think first and foremost, I think it's important that we see economic development. I mean, really, I really believe that continued investment into our economy helps to bring business, helps to bolster our economy, and really brings people well-paying, family-sustaining jobs. I think focusing in on union jobs, on our youth going into the trades is very important. I've coached football for the last 20 years. I've encouraged kids in our program, I've encouraged my own kids to get into the trades because they're very well-paying programs. And so, by us investing into the infrastructure and into our economic development, I think it can really raise a lot of opportunities for our young kids and for even people that are later in life to get involved in well-paying jobs and can help even out some of them disparities.
Thank you. Candidate Grimm, same question?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think there's a mix. One of the primary roles of the county is to react to the need that's in the community and to help stabilize people when there is that need. So, and it's essentially an implementation arm by nature. And so, when people need to get connected to childcare, to housing, to all of those things that really help a person keep a stable job and help out lots of families during times like these, that implementation arm piece of it is really important to run well. There's not as many economic tools at the county level as there is at the state and the city level, and I really want to do that county work. And that said, I do really believe in strong state and city partnerships to make sure that we're using our blight reduction program, that we're offering incentives for people to be able to have businesses here long-term, that we're making sure people are trained for the types of jobs that we're going to be seeing in the future, so that they can meet the needs of employers. And I think to do that, you need someone who is able and experienced in building a long-term vision, too. And so, I've helped with strategic planning for nonprofits, but I've also done a lot of that work in policy with the Human Rights Commission and working in collaboration with the administration and people who are setting long-term goals, too.
Okay, thank you. And candidate McCord, we'll start, we'll go back to you again. In your opinion, what are the most important challenges facing our region, and how do you propose to address those challenges?
Well, I think we touched on some of this earlier on. And really, I think first and foremost, right now, the biggest struggle we're going to have is recovery. Like I mentioned before, there's a lot of families devastated right now from COVID-19. How do we lift these folks up? How do we get people back to work with well-paying jobs? And again, I think that's through infrastructure. There is clearly an opioid epidemic in our communities. That's another issue. Certainly, what tools can we offer as a county, and where can we plug them into outreach programs? I watched one of your forums previously, and I think Pete Starber had said, if we did a press release every time somebody died of an opioid overdose in our community, we would do two to three a day. So I think really bringing that out from the shadows into the forefront can help us try to attack this problem. So, again, to recap, I mean, there's a lot of issues facing our county throughout this COVID-19, but I think economic recovery, our opioid epidemic, and just, you know, getting men and women back to work and maintaining our infrastructure.
Thank you. Candidate Grimm?
Do you mind repeating the phrasing of the question?
Yeah, I would be happy to. In your opinion, what are the most important challenges facing our region, and how do you propose to address those challenges?
Yeah, so I think these are challenges that existed before the epidemic and have just been made worse from the epidemic. We were already in a housing crisis. I actually spent a lot of my time organizing when Essentia was in plans to demolish 19 units of naturally-occurring affordable housing that were right on a bus line and by a supermarket. We have lacked units for a long time, and we need to keep building that to keep people at work, but also to help make a dent in this crisis when people need it the most. Second, I completely agree, the opioid epidemic. I have a hard time sometimes taking the kids to a park because I have to scan beforehand to make sure that there's not needles there. We absolutely need to have people who know what programs work to get people clean from addiction, and to keep people clean from addiction, and to invest in those resources. And then, lastly, economic recovery, which means good-paying jobs. You should be able to have a healthcare to support your family on one job. You should be able to take time off if your child gets sick, and you should have county commissioners that really value that, and who will work with the trades to make sure that we have good-paying jobs and the projects that the county leads on.
Thank you. And we'll move right back to you with the next question?
Yeah.
Begin. What are the top three things that the county board should do to improve the region's economy?
Yeah, so I think one is running a sound budget so that we are able to keep our levy at a reasonable rate. People have seen property taxes really spike in the western side of Duluth, and that has been hard on businesses who are trying to recover. And so, I think if we are able to have people in there who know and have experience running sound budgets, that way, we'll be able to make that levy at an amount where we're not going to have to have those spikes that are really hard for local businesses to handle right now. And I've talked to a lot of local businesses and homeowners who are really struggling with that. Right now, we're projected to see a 2% to 3% growth as a county in the buildings that we have, and that will help offset some of that. Second, in terms of economic development, using the tools that we have and using them well. So, that blight reduction program, when there is buildings that cannot be rehabbed, and we've seen some of those in the western neighborhoods, the county is able to tear those down, and so that they're able to attract investors and other businesses. They're able to do direct investment and help build capital, and then partner with West Duluth Business Clubs and really innovate. Like, there are some tools at our disposal. But third is going to be really collaborating and building those relationships at a state and city level to take advantage of the economic incentives that exist, and to be a strong voice for our part of the city, and then for what we know about the rest of the county, to build a strategic plan and move forward together.
Thank you. Candidate McCord?
Yeah, and I think it can't be overstated that investment into our economic development is paramount to improve our region's economy. I said in my opening statement, we have a lot of natural resources at our disposal. You know, really utilizing them, they provide a lot of work for the hard-working men and women in our community and throughout our county. You know, so investment into our economic development, renewed investment into our natural resources, you know, like Ashley said, there's a lot of blighted homes, there's a lot of tax-forfeited properties. St. Louis County is the largest land manager in the state of Minnesota. There's a lot of forfeited tax properties. Really identifying, I think, quickly what the best use is for each of those properties, whether it's green space, whether it's economic development, or for recreation, I think is important, because in walking in these communities, there's a lot of people, a lot of times, I hear the same stories, that there's a lot that they'd like to buy, but it takes them five-plus years to purchase that property. Even condemned homes, they're willing to take them down and invest their money on them and get them back on the tax roll. And so, how can we speed that up? That will help boost our economy. And yeah, and maintaining our levy increases. Sometimes we go three to four times the rate of inflation, and certainly, that's going to hamper any economic development opportunities we'd have.
Great, thank you. Candidate Grimm, we'll go back to you with the next question?
Yeah.
How can county government, in collaboration with other levels of government, help address racial and cultural divides in public safety?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think first and foremost, we can look at what communities are telling us. There was some proposals brought up, and this wasn't to defund the police. These were proposals to increase transparency, to increase accountability from the indigenous commission and African-American commission. And I think that we need to work in partnership at both the state, city, and county level, to really open up conversations, and also to double down on improvements that we've made locally. So, I think about, there's a social worker that now works with the Duluth Police Department. And so, now at the Damiano Center, if there is a mental health crisis that's happening, that social worker is able to respond with proper treatment and to do follow-up and connect with resources. And I think that we need more of that, and to look at a state and county level to say, what do we do when there's mental health crises happening? Are we responding with the police when we should have more mental health resources? What do we do in domestic abuse cases after that call has been made to follow up? There's restorative programs in Duluth, and I'm trained in one of them, that help families who have dealt with domestic abuse. We should be able to make calls with people who are specifically trained in those, because that would ease the burden of the police, too. And it's been proven to work in Duluth in the small amount that we've done it.
Great, thank you. Candidate McCord, same question?
Yes. So, I think collaborative efforts between different government entities is very important when you're addressing this issue. There's a lot of overlap through our county and, say, tribal organizations, tribal councils, specifically in our police departments and in our social workers. They work closely together, and how do we encourage that, to open up communication? And like anything else, it's important to listen, whether it's issue or any other issue that's important to the citizens. The role of the county board is to really listen to the concerns and try to address them the best we can. And in response with the police department, I think investment into our police forces is very important. We know, just in our conversation sitting here today, that there's a lot more difficult things that we're facing as a county. And really, police officers are on the front line of all of these issues, whether it's homelessness, or opioids, or domestic violence. And we're asked them to go to ever-increasingly difficult situations with kind of the same level of training as they've always had. So, I think if we want to see improvements there, it's best to invest in our police department, and specifically, our sheriff's department, for additional training, to give them the tools that they need, so they can go out there and be effective.
Great, thank you. And we will, I will begin with you on the next question?
Okay.
All right. St. Louis County is dealing with COVID-19 challenges like the rest of Minnesota and the entire country. What is the county doing that's working well, and what needs improvement, or what needs improvement?
Sure. Well, I think the county's doing a great job. These are really uncharted territories for everybody, and especially for our county. You know, it's really hard right now to say what they can do better and what they should have done better. I think 10 years from now, we'll all have a better idea, looking back, on what could have been improved on. But I think right now, our county is working actually quite hard to get out information to the public, and to work with community and healthcare experts, and they're following guidelines from, you know, CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health. So really, I would give credit to our county right now for trying to stay ahead of this and trying to slow our curve, because there's a lot that depends on that. And getting our economy back is one, getting our children back in school is another. You know, it's very important for our kids to get back into school, not only for socialization, but really, I think our teachers are 55% of first report of abuse. So it's important for our kids to get back into the community. So, I think the county's doing a great job, and I would applaud them on that.
Okay. Candidate Grimm, same question?
Absolutely. I think the county has done a good job of getting information out to people. I really appreciate the county commissioners who really pushed for county workers to be able to leave county offices and transition to work at home. And I think that's an area where the county has made significant progress. Some of those technology systems hadn't been updated in a very long time, and so, they had to quickly figure out a way to update technology, make sure that they were looking at positions, and figuring out a way to do that at home safely. And I think that's something that we've been seeing citywide, that there's more flexibility in employment than we initially thought that there would be. And so, the county has done a really good job at that, and I think it's something that we need to keep making movement on. Something I would like to see more movement on is having a proactive approach for people experiencing homelessness and marginalized populations, so that they are able to distance and prevent from getting COVID. Because I have a sister who works with COVID patients as a nurse. I work with a lot of people who are staying at chum during the day, and I want to see a plan in place for them to not have to be crowded next to 80 people, which will be a huge public health crisis, and for us to do some proactive planning on that, and then just really learn long-term lessons from this in the future, to say, what do we need with housing, public health, and our information systems for county workers to make sure that we're able to weather future crises?
Thank you. Candidate McCord, I'll start with you. What can county government do to help address the impact of global climate change in our region?
Well, I think like we touched on earlier about energy consumption. You know, the county has a role. Obviously, we all want to be good stewards of our environment here in Minnesota. We all want to leave a better county and a better state of Minnesota for future generations. So I think, you know, working on that transition, and how is that possible and feasible without crippling our economy or leaving us open to security issues. So really, everything should be done with a balanced approach. I think when you talk about transitioning from one source of power to the other, or using fossil fuels or renewable energy, it all comes down to balance and taking a balanced approach on it. Now, it's something that I think we should all look for and strive for. And again, I touched on the program that St. Louis County has worked on with UMD and Minnesota Power, in looking for opportunities to find ways of reducing our carbon footprint.
Thank you. Candidate Grimm?
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I do really want to acknowledge that there are a lot of people that do have livelihoods and are really dependent on some of the industries that we've had. And so, I think what we can do to make a really solid transition is to first, set goals. We won't ever get someplace if we don't have a vision of what that should and could look like. Second, build green projects. So the county is not in charge of permitting extractive industries. It's not. I get that question a lot. It really is a divisive issue, but I just want people to know what to expect from the county board. And overall, you have a very pro-mining county board. Where I think we do have opportunity is looking forward, building- is looking forward, building green projects, and then building incentives for green energy. When we're talking about companies coming in, maybe there's some way that we can work with the city to get some of the land that the county has for green energy projects and things like that. Because I think a lot about this quote that Arnold Schwarzenegger had a while ago, actually, when he was governor. And he said, "We don't want to be the last people buying stock in Blockbuster." I really do want someone on the board that's forward-thinking about our economy.
Thank you. All right, so one last question, and maybe this is a good one to end on is, and we'll begin with you, candidate Grimm. What is your definition of leadership?
Yeah, I saw this on the last debate, and I didn't prep for it. You know, what I look for is, A, someone who has experience, but also someone who has passion for what the role does. I really see every day how the county helps stabilize families. And I want to bring that passion, know how to run a good budget, to really invest in this job and what this does. I see a leader as being able to kind of set precedent and talk to people when you need to on issues of equality, but then also to take a seat and listen too. And not just take a seat, but to get out into the community. I worked for years on the Homeless Persons Bill of Rights, and it taught me some of the biggest lessons I've ever learned. One, to make sure that you really do go in with open ears and you're not saying it's a public forum and you're just trying to get people to get the answer that you think should be there. Two is that we, in a leadership position, have the obligation to fight for people who are not in this room. We have the obligation to build those connections and have good, solid policy because otherwise what happens is it's taken out on other people that aren't in that room. They're the ones who are feeling the effects, frontline workers, people experiencing homelessness. So my idea of a leader is someone who will really listen and will really advocate and put in a fight, but will do it in a smart way where we're making progress. Because you can't work in direct service work and see the levels of problems in Duluth every day without passionately wanting to do that.
Great, thank you. Candidate McCord, same question?
Yeah, I think the definition of a leader varies depending on where you're using it. You know, there's leaders all over in our community, whether it's a mom or a dad leading their families, or there's a lot of coaches and youth organizers in our community that get involved with kids. And I've spent the last 20 years coaching football and leading kids and trying to lead by example and to show them kind of the right values, and maybe not all of them get that from home. And then I think specifically when we talk about leaders in government, you know, I think leaders are those that first represent what their community. Really, we get this in campaigning. If you go door-knocking or if you're doing virtual forums, whatever format you're doing right now in campaigning, you're hearing concerns of the voters, and it's your job to go and represent them. And I think leadership is sometimes making the difficult choices. You know, St. Louis County is going to be faced with some very difficult choices in the coming months, in the coming years. And I think the leaders are going to be the ones that step up and fight to make some difficult choices.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to ask each candidate to give a two-minute closing statement, and we'll start with candidate, what did I say before?
Candidate McCord.
Candidate McCord, and then we'll end with candidate Grimm.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, thank you so much. Thank you, Ashley, for coming today. This has been really great to get some ideas out on this platform, so I really appreciate, again, the opportunity. So I truly believe that we have an opportunity right now in our county government, you know, even given the enormous challenges that we're facing, I think we have an opportunity to really lay the groundwork, lay a good foundation for recovery. And we can do this through leaning on the things that make our county great already, our natural resources, our human resources that we have, the people in our communities, the areas of our economy that have treated us so well and that we are leaders on right now, which is healthcare, education, aviation, tourism. So really, investing through economic development, I think, is very important. That will be one of the staples of my campaign. Continuing to invest in infrastructure throughout this recovery is very important. I think compromise, our county historically, I think, does a great job in compromise. We live in one county. While we have varying needs throughout the county, we all have a common goal, and that's improving our county and leaving something behind that's better for future generations. And I think that this upcoming county board will do much the same work. So, and also, I think we need to apply all of these things in our recovery to focus on continuing uninterrupted services of our key programs. I think that's going to be very important. How do we fill the gaps? Because we will have some difficult decisions ahead, and I think commissioners are going to have to compromise with one another to fill those gaps. So yes, I believe that this is the best way we can achieve recovery and revitalize our region's economy. And so, thank you again.
Thank you. Candidate McCord, candidate Grimm?
Yeah, I want to thank both of you for being here. This was really great to share ideas and to hear these questions too, and to be able to reach people in a time when it's difficult to reach people in a safe way. So I do think that we have good opportunities to keep progress where we've made it. I want to keep someone on the county board who has a social services perspective, who is able to help create a long-term vision and make sure that we're serving our families in one of the times where people are at the most need, and that we're able to do that and have someone in there with the budget experience to help run that effectively because that's going to affect property taxes. It's going to affect our economic redevelopment. And as well as, I think it's really important, and there's a lot of opportunity to have strong public health initiatives during this time, and really get out to uninsured populations and set good precedents in our community, and learn lessons from all of this too, about how to build a forward-thinking economy, on how to serve our workers and our families. And I would be so honored to have people's vote to be the third district county commissioner. I really appreciate the work of the county, and I want to say one last time, thank you to the League for putting on events like this. And whenever there's voters who say, like, "I don't know where to get information," you're one of the first places that I say about a nonpartisan guide who does really good work in the community.
Thank you. This concludes candidate forum for St. Louis County Commissioner, District Three. It's our purpose in sponsoring meetings to provide viewers and audience with an opportunity to hear candidates and discuss issues that are important to them. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues, so we encourage you to feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this program's helped you learn a little bit more about the candidates and issues, and you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, August 11th, primary day. I'd like to thank the candidates, PACT TV, and everyone for making this possible. Remind you again to vote for the candidates of your choice. The District Seven Senate Forum is on the League of Women Voters website, Facebook, available on PACT TV YouTube page. And so just thank you. PACT will carry this forum and others that we have. So thank you so much for coming and for being here.
Thank you.
And be safe.
Thank you.